It's all up to you there.
Okay. I have seen the oath on the screen. I'll go through it real slowly and I'll interrupt at certain words. And I'll ask you to raise your right hand, put your left hand on the Bible, and repeat that. You do not have to say your name, but just repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified
That I am duly qualified.
According to the Constitution of this state
According to the Constitution of this state.
To exercise the duties
To exercise the duties.
Of the office to which I have been elected
To the office of which I have been elected.
And that I will
And that I will
To the best of my ability
To the best of my ability.
Discharge those duties
Discharge those duties.
And preserve
And preserve.
Protect
Protect.
And defend
And defend.
The Constitution of this state
The Constitution of this state.
And of the United States
And of the United States.
And the ordinances of this county.
And the ordinances of this county.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Both parties.
Good evening, everyone. Well, that was weak. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. I'd like to call the South Dakota Council regular meeting for Tuesday, January 10th. To order, let us all stand, please, with the people in whose votes and voteations. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, pray. Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we do thank you for bringing us through the holiday season and bringing us to the first meeting of this year. Thank you for all of your mercies and your grace that kept us to see another year. We thank you for allowing us to come to the table to serve you again. We thank you for those new, well, re-elected officials who have taken the oath yet another time to serve you in the way that you have appointed and anointed them to serve. Of all of us to serve in a way that you have set the examples for us to be servant leaders and to always be good stewards of what you've blessed us with and to never forget the least of those, the people that we are serving. And as we begin our meeting, we ask that you help us to look at every item with concern and help us to have wisdom and clarity of mind. We ask you to also bless all of the people from our community who came to our meeting, those who suffered to come witness this swearing in, and those who are always here to support us. Help us to be a shining example, that they will be able to praise you for the work that you're doing through us. And as we finish this meeting this evening, have all of us to get home safely to our families. These are our blessings we thank, and as in the precious name of your Son and our Savior, Jesus Christ.
Tonight, we'll be led in the Pledge of Allegiance for our retired U.S. Marine Douglas Seaman who served our country from August 1963 to August 1990. He is a Vietnam and Gulf War service veteran with over 30 years of honorable service. He currently lives in County Council District 5. Thank you for your service, Sergeant.
Thank you. You make it sound a lot better than what I lived through. Everybody face flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And you serve our country, which is based in one nation, under our God. Invisible, liberated, and God has us all. Thank you.
You still fit that uniform, don't you?
Yeah, I had to let a few buttons down.
Have a motion to approve somebody agenda. Have a motion and second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a motion to approve our minutes for our regular meeting for 2/13 December 12. Prove it properly, second. Any discussion? Ain't none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now we clear our offices. The offices are all
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Jim McCamus, the chairman.
Any other nomination? All in favor of Jim McCamus being chairman, please raise your hand. All opposed, same. Officer Vice Chairman, Mr. Allen, Jimmy Burke.
Sir.
All in favor of Jimmy Burke being vice? All opposed? Okay, congratulations, Jimmy.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Land use matters, a rezoning request. Mr. Rooney.
Good evening. This evening, RZ 2213 is reserved at 1700 Peatorture Road to rezon approximately .22 acres of a larger, almost one acre tract of property from agriculture conservation to general commercial. This is the property in question. It's at the corner of Glenn Street and Peatorture Road. It is actually split zone. The commercial corridors back in 1999 made a buffer on both sides of the road, which left some lots with only portions of the property zoned in one district and then split into another. The applicants are actually asking to bring this entire lot into the general commercial district. It's a little close-up view of the property. It has some pretty significant landscape of tree buffers on both the northeast and northwest property boundaries. This request is really coming out of a desire for the applicants to do a commercial project on this property. It would be a garden center, landscape nursery. The intent is to bring it into the general commercial district just to unify the development standards and so that they're dealing with one set of rules instead of two. This is how the property looks today and has for quite some time. It is in the Military Protection Planning Area. The MPA is supportive of rezoning properties from the agricultural zone district to commercial designations that remove the possibility for manufactured housing. So we do find that this request is generally consistent with comprehensive planning. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. Although there is adjacent agricultural property to the west and it's part of residential development, this Peatorture Road frontage really is commercial and it historically has been developed that way. It is in general a land of comprehensive plan and bringing the property into one zoning district is part of a best practice in the planning profession. Having answered questions, chairman.
Mr. Chairman. Is this District 1 or District 2?
Don't remember off the top of my head.
Let me see. Let me. I was trying to look.
It's right across the street from
Give me a landmark, Carolina Mobile.
Yeah, Carolina Mobile Park.
Oh, okay. I make motion to approve for a brief second.
I had a couple of questions. Was there any community opposition?
The public hearing will be at the next meeting, so the public notices actually went out last Friday. I had one phone call from a property owner. He was just curious. I explained to him where it was, and he said, oh, well, then I'm not going to come. That's the only thing I've heard so far.
You haven't gotten any negative phone calls?
No, I really haven't.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion to the second for first reading. Any discussion? Ain't none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Ordinance number 22983, Mr. Bryant. And prior to hoping second reading, we will have a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman and Council, ordinance Please check out 83 and orange to prove sale property located 205 to 15 North Magnolia Street. That's the old health center. And the plan is to sell this property, see if the property holdings LLC, principal which is Kevin Conley, who has built some other low to moderate income apartments around the city of South Dakota operates those considerations, not more than a thousand, but there'll be an investment of 14.5 million for 50 low to moderate income apartments. This will increase the tax base within the county. We're going to take any questions prior to public hearing.
And now declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance number 22983, please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. For a second, we're moving to property second that we have second reading on ordinance number 22983. Any discussion? Ain't none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Ordinance number 22984, Mr. Bryant. And prior to the second reading, we'll again have another public hearing on this ordinance as well.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Council, we've been approached by Atlas Property Group LLC with an offer to purchase the spectrum, which is at Homewood Road and the property acres, $327,600. You have attached this contract, still being negotiated. But you have the contract attached, has the most of the settlement points versus price in the property to be sold. We're going to take any questions prior to the public hearing.
I, there is a historical marker outside of that fence, I believe, Mr. Mixon, designating something about colored schools. Does that go, Mr. Andrew?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Paragraph 5.1G on paragraph 5 says the monument must be preserved.
Have to, to the ordinance. Read it. Do you have the appraised value?
We've not had it appraised. We, we, we had, we had a rough appraisal done by one deputy assessor.
Price of it's Price is good. We're sorry, we're discussing the hearing, please. Okay, Mr. Bryant. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you. Now, clear the public hearing portion of this reading. Open anyone wishing to speak for or against ordinance number 22984. Please proceed to the podium, state your name for the record. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Please approve, second. We're moving to property second, that we have second reading on ordinance number 22984. Any further discussion? Ain't none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Third reading, ordinance number 22982.
Mr. Chairman, Council, good evening. Ordnance 22982 is a third reading request for a budget amendment to utilize $700,000 from our reserve fund for the renovations of Magnolia building. There's no changes to that second reading.
Move for a second. Then move to property second, that we have third reading on ordinance number 22982. Any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Ordnance number 22982 is passed. Coming out to committee reports, report from council members on other meetings, trends, and about conferences.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Washington. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On a couple, a couple areas. Last Tuesday night, I hosted and facilitated a meeting with about 100 residents at the Raffin Creek Community Center. In attendance were Senator Collins McAlpin, Representative Will Weirwood, and Representatives from the Department of Transportation. The reason for the meeting is because a lot of the complaints that I have gotten about roads in my district, District 1, which stands from River down to Pinewood, are state roads and not county roads. As it turns out, there are 137 state roads in District 1. Lots of roads that we travel on and are familiar with. Just to sort of give you a frame of reference, we're talking about roads like 261, 521, Wedgefield Road, Cherryvale Drive, DeChap's Road, Dickens Mill, Paygood, Horatio, just a number of roads where people are experiencing problems. And the problems that they are experiencing can involve road conditions, trash and litter, tree hangovers as a result of uprooting from storms and trees kind of hanging over the roads. Some trees end in ditches. In fact, there was an instance over by Raffin Creek Baptist Church where the roads had been ditched and all of the trash came downhill. So there's a big lotta trash in front of the church. Now, these are state roads. And so, we thought it was important to ask the folks who supervise and have jurisdiction over state roads to be there. And they were there, of course. The meeting went from about 6:00 to 8:00. We ended up discussing three roads, but folks wanted the opportunity to expand the conversation for their areas. And so, we will be scheduling four more meetings over the quadrants of District 1. One in Pinewood, one in Wedgefield, one in, at Catch Off, and then one up at Tisker Crossroads so that residents can express the difficulty they're having with these roads, with these issues. Now, we have some of these same issues with county roads. My plan is to duplicate that same process. Once we go through the state roads, our roads are in horrible condition. And we have to figure out a way to address this issue doing something other than just saying no. And so, I think Senator McAlpin is committed to trying to address this issue through DOT with the state roads. And I think we should mirror what he is doing with the county roads. It's kind of hard to ask residents to support a lot of the things that we do if their road systems are not passable. Which sort of leads me to the next issue that has been raised with me, which are private roads. Now, let me just start by saying that private roads are more of a rural issue than they are a city issue. But, Mr. Chairman, some of the private roads in my district, there's some in Councilman Burke's district, there's some in Councilman Baker's district, and Council Lady McGaughn's district. These roads have many people that live on them, some 20, 30, 40 people. And some of these roads are so impassable that families have had to create other roads through other people's property just to access their homes. Think about that for a second. If they're, if they have to do that, it is then impossible for emergency services, law enforcement, to get to them in case of emergency. And we have to do better than that. There is a solution, and we just have to put our heads together. What I'd like to do is to request that this is on the agenda for the next council meeting so we can begin to have discussions about how to address this issue. We have to do more than say, no, these folks are paying taxes just like everyone else, and they need to be able to have access to their property. Even if it requires some sort of commitment from them, we have to help these residents. The last thing, and I'll close on this, is that one of the other things from the meeting last Tuesday night at the community center was litter. And what was communicated is that there has been a lot of conversation about addressing litter. We have a litter committee. I wrote a litter plan, but the litter problem is not moving. And two things need to be done. The litter has to be cleaned up, and then enforcement has to happen. So the other issue I want us to talk about as a body, and this is a request to put it on the agenda, is how we deal with the litter issue because it is not getting better. That is my request. Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Washington, I know we talked about this. Would you be agreeable with some of the committees? I wouldn't have the new litter officer come in and explain what he's going on, what's he doing, and update on public works on it. Would that be okay for you? Send both the committees, I'd ask the public works committee, I believe, to that group, or whatever committee it is.
I would be agreeable to that with the caveat that subsequent to that meeting, I'd like for the litter officer to come before council and explain the same thing so people in the public will know that we are addressing this.
Okay, that's fine. Like you said, with roots very high, give you one example. People actually couldn't power it, and it was, it's just a bad day for them. I don't have to answer these.
Enforcement.
Oh, yeah, and that's a
Cameras.
And then the arrest of a lady recently. I want to know how many. Haven't been arrested for the litter. One. One.
We gotta do better.
Oh, I can arrest them all. All right. Thank you.
If we can get those, but I, I am amenable to using the committee process. That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time. Thank you, Mr. Washington.
Chairman. Mr. Spade.
Yes, I'm glad I listened to Councilman Washington because what he was saying about roads had a lot to do with what I've been hearing in this county. And I'd like to make this statement, and I'd like to have your part of minutes. For the past seven years, South Dakota Council has been elected public education in South Dakota. Council members often state that education is the foundation of economic development. However, from 2016 to 2022, county council only invested $375,000 in public education. County council denied the Southern School District over $5 million in funds that the South Carolina Department of Revenue said the school district was entitled to by law of the South Carolina Act 388. under South Carolina Act three-eighty-eight. Four members of Sunkin County Council have demonstrated by their consistent votes that they have verging on concern at any for improving the quality of education for children of low-income families who are attending public school. Also, the same members show real concern about the low salaries, near poverty level, of essential employees, food service workers, bus drivers, maintenance, and custodians that are needed to ensure the efficient operation of Sunkin School District. To understand the urgency to improve quality of education in public schools and to need to, and need to receive all entitled funds, we must be aware of and willingly accept certain facts about education in the United States, South Carolina, and Sunkin County. First, of the ten states with the worst public school system in 2021, South Carolina was ranked third. Also, South Carolina ranked forty-eight in the quality of education and thirty-eight in percent of people with high school or college degrees. Second, South Carolina is the ninth poorest state in the United States. South Carolina ranks fourth in poverty rate at sixteen-point-six percent. The national average is fourteen-point-six. The poverty rate in Sunkin County is twenty-point-five percent. The Sunkin County rate is five-point-nine percent higher than the national average and three-point-nine percent higher than the South Carolina rate. Poverty in Sunkin County, twenty-point-five percent, is a very serious problem. Poverty is about not having enough money to meet basic needs, including food, clothing, and shelter. However, poverty is more, much more than just not having enough money. The World Bank Organization described poverty in this way. Poverty is hunger. The Sunkin County School District depends on loyal and dedicated food service workers to faithfully report to work in the early morning hours. They are tasked to prepare healthy meals to feed all Title I students so that they can eat and concentrate on their classroom assignments. Although these workers are being paid poverty raises, four council members still voting to deny their pay increase that they have not received in two years. Sunkin School District ranked sixty-four out of eighty-one school districts in South Carolina. If the district is to move from the bottom twenty-five percent to the top twenty-five percent in order to prepare the workforce needed to attract high-paying business and industry, Sunkin County Council and the Sunkin County State delegation must change their attitude about educating children from poor, low-income families. They must realize the mission of public school is to develop a productive workforce with the skills and knowledge to improve and sustain economic development. In November of 2022, Sunkin County Council asked the citizens to vote for a referendum to continue the one-cent capital penny sales tax. The elected officials and community leaders in Sunkin County knew this was a show of weakness. However, they were in shock when the citizens rejected the tax by less than five-hundred votes. County council members want to justify this defeat by saying it was due to poor advertising. In November of 2024, County Council will have another opportunity to submit another one-cent sales tax for citizens approved. Now is the time for the four members on County Council to stop disrespecting public education, low-income school district employees, and Title I students in public school. They must realize that Sunkin County had a twenty-point-five percent poverty rate. Over twenty-two thousand citizens live in poverty. County Council cannot expect low-income people to voluntarily put a tax on themselves when for seven years County Council refused the pastor's marriage approved to improve their quality of life and the quality of education of their children. This past midterm election showed low-income people have the power of their vote. They realize that the vote is their voice. Their message is loud and clear. No school marriage, no penny tax. In short, no marriage, no tax. The insanity of County Council has lost over a hundred and seven million dollars in capital projects for refusing to give Sunkin School Districts five million dollars of the entitled money that they have received. Mr. Chairman, this is a disgrace. And if we want to continue and improve this county with the penny sales tax that has been a great benefit to this county, if they were to make improvements to attract high-paying business and industry like Continental Town, then we need to support public education, which is the backbone of economic development in this county. Thank you.
Anyone else? Monthly reports, Ms. Planted.
Council members who need to please contact me concerning counties could make in the legislative date. Also, there will be institute classes being held during that same time, so let me know if you plan to take in more courses. And the Rural Summit will be held March the sixth, and any council members interested in that, please let me know. The Public Works Department monthly report is in your packet, as well as the Sheriff's monthly report. And lastly, those that plan to attend the Chamber retreat, please give me a call tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Brindstrater, county manager, report.
Mr. Chair, council, good evening again. First, I'd like to remind council that at the next meeting on January the twenty-fourth, we will have our external independent audit from coming report, annual report for the last fiscal year. That information is on, it's shared with the state, so they're prepared now to present for council. The second item, I did want to mention, follow-up on some remarks this evening, we look forward to the opportunity to bring Mr. McCoy, a litter officer, who's fairly new, but has done great things over the last couple of weeks, as McAlveen mentioned. I believe our first case of someone actually being incarcerated because of litter. There are a number of other violations and fees and fines and community service work that have been issued, but that, to my knowledge, is the first that's actually had people incarcerated. So, I'm happy to get him up here and explain, or the opportunity to share with him a little bit of his experience, and the opportunity to also share what's going on in the county. Let me know that there's a meeting next Tuesday, I believe it's the seventeenth, with a large group, partnership with the city, the county, the litter advisory board, and others to plan a major event. I believe it's going to be the latter part of February, the first of March, but that, those activities are being planned and scheduled starting next Tuesday. I don't know if it's only that. And last, the capital penny sales tax, I know it was discussed tonight. I believe there will be some opportunity over the next, at least certainly within the next couple of months, to start developing a strong strategy, which I believe will engage and involve council members as well as other community leaders early on in the process to, to develop a good strategy for the next 2024. Been informed that the chamber retreat, which many of you are participating in, also plans on discussing some options and community input with the capital penny sales tax. So, things are afoot and moving. Just remind council that the scheduled time would be obviously next November of 2024 would be the elections, so back off of that. We're looking at a good nine, ten-month process and maybe even moving it back a little further than that based on some of the conversations we'll have over the next few weeks. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Can you tell me the time and location for the litter meeting on the seventeenth?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Mary, I'm sorry. Mary, just inform me that we won't have any committees in place for the next meeting, so it will be like the next meeting or unless we call for a special meeting. The seventeenth, what time and where is that meeting?
It's at Public Works, and I believe it's at ten in the morning. I'll get that scheduled, I'll do that.
Any other questions? Coming on to the public comment portion of our agenda, citizens desiring to speak to council, limited to no more than three minutes. Comments are to be made to the chairman. Anyone wishing to address council, please proceed to the podium, and please state your names for the record. Public comment portion of our agenda is now.
My name is Kimberly Lanning, and I live on Fellow Lane. It's one of those routes that we all heard about earlier, one of those private routes. Approximately ten families live on it, and it is bad, that's the word, it's bad. And when it rains, it's hard to enter and exit. It's only one-way, you have to go over in the woods to try to get in and out. There's no drainage there. We have elderly and children there with health issues. And I've been battling this for some time, and I'd just like for you all to consider this. Of course, private roads, we're taxpayers, so you can't understand why we're a taxpayer who talk about paying tax. Well, you know, so many questions there. Why can't we get some assistance? Emergency vehicles can't come in and access someone with their health. That's how bad the road is. So, I just thought I would come, please, and express my concerns.
What's the name of the road again?
Fellow Lane.
I just broke it.
F-E-L-L-O.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, it is off of two-sixty-one and Garage Road. Yeah, I have visited the road probably four times, and it is just as bad as Mr. Lanning has described up there with the residents out there. The, I think the county has some water lines out there as well, so they have to be really careful about what they may try to do to improve the area because they don't want to cut or interfere with something that's underground, and this is one of the things that I've been raising with folks that have an issue that they're our folks, they're Sunkinites, and we gotta figure out a way to help them.
Thank you, Mr. Lanning. Anyone else wishing to address council?
Mr. Watkins, I'm. Oh, Dave, good evening. Happy New Year's. I've been away for about six months, and it's good to be back, and it's good to be able to see government in action. And I think one of the reasons why we don't get as much participation from the public is a lack of civic concern. And I've always said that there's two types of rights that we have. One is civic, and the other is civil rights. And I think the civic part is lacking. There was a gentleman who said, "Power conceives nothing without a demand," and agitate, agitate, agitate. And the government agencies and the people who's, who's supposed to represent us, or who do represent us, I'll say, actually many times don't know what's happening because no one brings their attention. The way that young lady just came up and brought it to the attention of the entire County Council is what should be done on a regular basis. Even when it came down to the littering, many people, they don't complain about the conditions. There was a fire at, on Broad Street, Broad Street and Hospital Circle, in a historic building, which was the first black hospital in South Carolina, that was vacant for quite some time. It's a historic landmark which has never been designated. The fire, what I understand, was not that serious, but the attempt to put the fire out was more devastating to the building than the fire. So, as a result, this building probably is going to be demolished, which is another eracial issue, not racial, but eras. There's been quite a few movements about erasure of the culture of people, and I can see in Sunkin. I mean, all of the hard work that was done in the civil rights movement, Cutter Drugstore, the other entities, there's no sign that there's been a movement in this, in, in Sunkin to level the playing field. I went to Louisville, Kentucky, and in Louisville, you go walk down the streets, you see signs up saying that this establishment, Mr. McCain mentioned, a sign about the, the property that is a black school. I think the developers need to, there should be stipulations that they put a sign back up there, or maybe a larger sign. And these places are, that being demolished. And I brought it up to the city council because they were talking about having these tours and bringing tourism. And my point was, and I'm sorry for taking the extra time, and my point, and I mentioned it to the director, when they have these tours, how many sites on that tour bring light to the fact that Black people was in this community? I mean, after all, there would be no evidence that there were a Black culture in this, in Sunkin. I mean that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Seeing none, public comment portion closed. Move to property second if we have none all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're all done.